I can't even, well, he would, actually.
How do you get birds out of the house? Chase them out?
You're sure your...
Whistle?
He can't. He said his dog had already gotten one of them, hadn't he?
Yeah.
Dog was in.
Yeah, dog already got one.
Brennan, any questions?
Do you want to...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
No, good question.
I just wanted to make sure you were asking.
Yes.
Councilman Cross is on his way, so we decided to wait for him a few minutes.
Four o'clock when he gets here.
I just hope it wasn't a train. Kept him...
Birds.
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 He sent us an email. He had birds in his house.
What time is tip off?
Eight, I think.
Eight?
I don't know how I've got that.
No.
No.
Your mic's not working over here.
You will be hung tonight.
Maybe because of yourself.
There's some things that are...
This guy hasn't been going.
Do it.
Has there anything been going? I bet you have. I don't know if that simulator's the one we had out in the park at the time. Man, that was so much fun. That was like real.
Oh, the...
That gun, the firearm simulator?
Oh, yeah. One of them. Especially after that name.
Yeah. Look, they had an actual, see, shot they had up there. See, brought in. It was an actual block. And it had an air blaster in it. So, it was shot. It felt like a recoil. It's incredible. It was just, you're so...
Kind of like soon my throat.
Really. Oh, I haven't seen that one. Well, this may be one of those.
What's the one that's...
They did.
Do you have any idea? You used the idea to get shot.
You could get shot, yeah.
I didn't notice.
It also teaches you how to have a better aim.
Yeah.
That's great, of course.
Yeah, I think that's gonna be...
It's kind of wild.
I think that'll be too, I think that'll be way too... That's the kind of stuff.
No, I've waited around since May twentieth, the blaster. Isn't that amazing? Literally May twentieth? No, it was actually a few days before that.
Might be a cost saver, a lifesaver for sure.
But the reason... Plus, I'm a... Oh, damn, damn, okay. I don't hear anything going on.
I had three guys come in. Stupidest thing you could ever do. There's three guys coming out of the back, all these guys, and you all stop, you know, all...
That was, that was on the simulator over there.
Yeah, that was really stupid because everybody turning around, start shooting. I thought...
Yeah, I get real under the... They said, "What'd you see?" I was recovering from... No, he messed up. But...
Under that circumstance, you can't shoot enough.
Yeah. That was true.
So, anyway, yeah.
I was late.
This, the news system.
I didn't know it was on until this day. And it's like, we talked about it a couple of months ago. He's like, "That's pretty close."
Two birds in the back. So, I can't see where I would put it. Yeah, I take it from what you're willing to think, you know? It just makes me happy, Chris, about it.
He hasn't been shot, has he? Actually, been hurt enough, about two days.
Nope. Hey, Ben, do we...
Is that Ray's purchase something potentially interesting?
Um, maybe, but even if it is, we won't be able to take it.
Okay, so we're not to that point. God, does she tell me how this is?
She did. Yeah, thank you. She doesn't think she's really been surprised at how much she did.
There's no man in the...
I don't know what she does. It's like lost, I must be lying.
Most, yeah.
We're gonna go ahead and start. Would you call the row, please?
Robert Kraus, Jason Blair.
Here.
Scott Singer.
Here.
Terry Kavner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here. Would you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item two is the consent docket. Item A is approved amendments of the regular city council meeting held March seventeenth, two thousand fourteen. Item B is approved resolution number seven nine two fourteen adopting the city of more comprehensive housing market analysis. And item C is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen in the amount of two million, four hundred eleven thousand, two hundred thirty-two dollars, ten cents.
Make a motion to approve.
All right.
Second.
Thank you both. We have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote if there's no other discussion?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number three is consider appointment of Dana Moffett to the more planning commission to fill the unexpired term of Tracy Dinkin.
Mayor and council, about six months ago, we had an advertisement for people who were interested in planning commission and board of adjustment. Mr. Moffett was one of those who submitted their application for planning commission. And you recall it, I believe it was in November meeting, we decide, or the council decided to put him on board of adjustment because we had some other people for planning commission. Well, it just so happens that I received notice about two or three weeks ago that one of our planning commissioners has decided to step down from planning commission and we have an opening. I have already contacted Mr. Moffett to see if he would still be interested, and he said that he was interested. So, I'm bringing this before you tonight.
Will he be able to stay on board of adjustment?
Funny thing, we actually had an extra member on the board of adjustment. So, this works out perfectly, where he can just transition over to planning commission.
No, he's a great choice.
Do we have a motion?
Make that motion to approve.
All right, thank you, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number four is consider the purchase of Vitra one eighty LE use-of-force firearm simulator from Vitra Systems as a sole source provider at approximately a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Mayor and council, I just stated this is a firearm simulator that's offered by Vitra Systems. And we have been wanting to purchase one of these for quite some time, but we've held off until we had the proper facility to put it into. And now that we have that with the new building, we'd like to go ahead and proceed with this purchase. There are several things that make it a sole source purchase that no other vendor offers. Basically, it can offer real-life scenarios that we can't produce on the gun range for safety reasons. And those scenarios can be changed as the officers are going through them. Instead of just having the scenario ready at the beginning and it'd be the same all the way through, you can change it. The instructor can change it as you go. Also, that offers the, it'll have three screens set up that are seamless, so a hundred and eighty degrees instead of just a one-screen system. You can also upgrade that to three hundred and sixty degrees all the way around you. So, this system would basically allow us to do situational training that we just can't do on the gun range. So, it will, you know, shoot, don't shoot scenarios that you just can't get that kind of training. It's a very good system. And we're gonna go ahead and use our discretionary funds for that that we have saved over the years from drug seizures.
Chief, is this the one that we had out in the park that time?
No, this is a lot better than that one.
Okay, is this the one that shoots back?
It doesn't shoot back, but if it, if you, it has the electrical pulse that, whereas if you, it's simulated that you're shot, you will get an electrical pulse instead of a, like a bullet or something coming at you. So, you'll know it, but it gives you some feedback rather than, you know...
So, it makes you know if you've messed up or aiming right or properly.
We'll get somebody to test that first before I do it.
Troy.
Yeah. I'll test it. It sounds like fun.
Sounds like a great training operation.
Make a motion to approve the petition.
That's good. Thanks. Counselor, good to use you.
Sure. And definitely, in other agencies, we can offer training and counsel, Citizens Academy, things like that, to give them an idea of what kind of, what kind of things our officers have, those kind of decisions, the same decisions they have to make.
Yeah, Troy took us over to one of them, Citizens Academy. It really was cool.
Yeah, and get your heart rate up, and it's very realistic.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote?
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number five is consider authorizing staff to solicit bids for custodial services for the Moore Public Library, the Community Center, and the Brand Center.
Mayor and council, on a previous agenda, probably two or three months ago, this body approved a new position for custodial services at the police station. However, since that time, we feel obligated to solicit bids for privatization of the community center, the library, and the Brand Center. We don't know what that cost will be. However, if we decide that that's our best way to go in the future, then we will not fill that slot that you previously approved a few months ago. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them. And basically, what we're doing is taking this existing staff and supporting the janitorial services at the new public safety center. And then we'll outsource where those employees are currently working, which is those three facilities.
So, this doesn't basically displace anybody?
It'll have, some of the people will be, their new location...
Reassigned. Reassigned.
It does not displace anyone?
Yep.
Okay. Do we have a motion to solicit bids?
Make your motion. We'll do that.
All right, thank you.
I'll say it.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number six is discuss and consider revising the occupation tax charged for brewers and distillers and direct staffed as deemed appropriate.
Mayor, we put this on the agenda just to have a brief discussion with you. This, it came to my attention whenever, we've had a gentleman here who's operated a very small distillery for, kind of on and off for the last two or three years. And the occupation tax, the tax that's called for under our city code is thirty-five hundred dollars a year for that. And he also, they also have to pay a state tax in that regard, the same amount, thirty-five hundred dollars. We looked at what other cities charge for that, and Norman charges thirty-five dollars for the same license versus thirty-five hundred. Oklahoma City charges twelve hundred and fifty, Midwest City, six hundred, Edmund, a thousand. And it just appeared to me, it seemed to me a little bit that our fee was a little high. I just wanted to basically just discuss that with you a little bit, see if you would want us to go forward and to bring back a change on the proposal. The same thing with brewers. We only have the one brewer here in town, which is the restaurant out there on Sooner Road. The fees are a little bit more in line there. The Moore Brewer license is twelve hundred and fifty. Norman is a thousand, Oklahoma City, twelve fifty, Midwest City, six hundred, and Edmund, a thousand. So, they're pretty close, but that other, and it's not like we've had large distilleries or ever will.
But there's fairness.
It's a, it's a small business, so he operates just in a warehouse somewhere, making small batches of vodka is what he does.
I think we're a little bit...
You mean, go there?
After the meeting tonight, to know.
Okay, maybe not.
Whenever we, as far as the distiller, when we looked at this, when I looked at it, throwing out the low and the high and averaging the other three cities, Oklahoma City, Midwest City, and Edmund, is around nine hundred dollars. So, that seemed to me to be more fair. So, if you're in agreement with that, then that's probably what we would bring back, probably no change in the brewer and...
I would just be interested, I have a problem with this adjustment. But it'd be interesting to find out why it was set, but I can acknowledge what the council at that time felt like.
It's probably been in the code for a long time, but what the code says is that it was the intent. And again, we've never had a distillery before, ever, until last year or two with a small kind of boutique, if there is such a thing, distillery. But what the code says is that was intent of the city to charge for these kinds of things the same as what the state charges. So, that's, it's thirty-five hundred, and apparently that's, again, but it was, I think it's probably been in the code for a long, long time at that price. So, who knows? I mean, I don't know. I mean, it could have been at the time, the thinking may have been to try to discourage these kinds of things. But again, if they're gonna have them and they're permitted into the zoning, I just didn't think that the thirty-five hundred dollars was, was, was fair.
Okay, I agree.
No action necessarily, but we'll, we'll do something on the next agenda.
Okay. All right. Item seven is consider approval of a contract with Ballard King Associates in the amount of twenty thousand dollars for preparation of a business and operation plan for the operation of Central Park.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, just to let you know that we're starting in the very early phases of developing Central Park, preparing for the opening. And that's a daunting challenge. There's a lot of complexity to it, a lot of things going on, a lot of moving parts. And to give you an idea of the scope that we're dealing with, the recreation center's gonna be about fifty-two thousand square feet. The aquatic facility, about fifty thousand square feet. The amphitheater will take up about one to two acres of land there. The farmer's market, multipurpose facility, will be five to six thousand square feet, and all that'll be on fifty acres of land. If we could just focus on the recreation center, because I think it's important that you all have an understanding of what we're gonna be dealing with here. In the recreation center, there'll be a five to six thousand square foot fitness center, a child watch area that's gonna be about a thousand square feet, multipurpose room where we'll have birthday parties and art classes and those kinds of things. There'll be eight hundred square feet, and then dance and exercise rooms of about three thousand square feet. And I say that to say this, these are all areas that we have no experience in dealing with. And they're important areas, especially when you're dealing with parents, kids, when you're watching them for an hour or two as they visit the facility. And so, there's no experience on staff with it. And it's important for council, I think, to understand that we cannot take the existing business model with the current community center and apply it to the new recreation center. It just doesn't work. You know, right now, we're closed on Sundays. Our hours are fairly normal operating hours. With the new recreation center, we're gonna be open all but five days out of the year. Our hours will be extended, thirty-two hours beyond what we're doing now. So, there's gonna be a lot of staffing needs and a lot of challenges with that. So, the challenges are gonna be numerous. They're gonna be large. And it's things that frankly, we just need help with. And how we answer those challenges will be critical to the success of the park and the facility. And we think frankly, to the bottom line of how that park operates. And so, the agenda item in the memo, it talks about specifically what this contract will do. But in the broad sense, it's gonna help us streamline the process. It's gonna set dates and timelines that we need to meet in order to have a successful opening. It'll help us avoid common mistakes, troubleshoot issues, prioritize areas that need to be addressed and when. And so, it's gonna shorten the timeframe for all this. And all these kinds of decisions are gonna be, are gonna be made in short periods of time where the answers are very critical. So, we need to make sure that we get the right answers for those issues. We think this is a critical component to the successful opening of the park, the recreation center and the aquatic park. Our strategy, both in the development and the design of all the facilities there at Central Park, has been very simple. We're gonna get one time, one shot to do this, and we wanna make sure it's right. So, that goes along with also the operation of the facility. So, obviously, we believe in this contract and this service. And so, with that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
I got one. How did we come up with Ballard and King?
They, Mayor, they have been instrumental in the development of the master plan that we used to take to the voters in November twenty twelve. And they're also part of the TAP design team. And what they're doing right now, their role, is to develop fee structures for the community, for the recreation center and the aquatic park. And then also, they helped a great deal with the space allocation and the design of the facility. So, we've had a great experience with them, and they're the, they're the gold standard for recreation centers, the development of them in this kind of project that you see before you. So, they're known worldwide. Are they three trips for more?
Yes.
I'm sure that it's gonna come down, three for times, do evaluation, go back to their office, and then just submit a report to you, and be available to answer questions. And there just seems kind of, some of the things, you know, employee checklist, closing, opening procedures, financial banking procedures, a lot of things, I think you guys could answer or come up with. And I understand that you want, you know, it's a bigger facility, and we wanna do it right. But, you know, that's twenty-six thousand dollars. Well, they will come down at a time of our choosing. There will be a lot of phone conversations, a lot of emails. But they've done this, and so we'll sit down with them immediately and lay out. The first thing that they'll do is set a timeline for when things need to happen. And then they will come down at a time that we choose that makes sense. Obviously, for the opening, as things open, they will be here for that. And then the other two times, whenever it works best for us, when it's... And that just helps, you know, we could have it down every ten times, but we wanted to make sure that it was reasonable from a affordability standpoint for us, so we think three makes...
I kind of agree with Mark. This will be the fifth contract that we're doing on planning a park since we started the park upgrade. That's getting to be a little much for consultants.
Well, Mayor, I think that that's true to a large extent. But I think that if we avoid one mistake, and it's a large mistake, we pay for this contract very easily. And, you know, the communities, the recreation center, the community's gonna visit about two-hundred-twenty-seven thousand people in that first year. The aquatic park is gonna be about seventy-five thousand people. So, we want their experience to be good. We don't want to overlook something. We don't want to leave something out. There's areas that we're gonna deal with, especially the child watch and the fitness center. But making sure we have the right kinds of equipment, because if you're gonna visit the recreation center, we wanna make sure that we have the right pieces of equipment there for you to work out on, enjoy, that it has the right kinds of amenities to it. And so, we just think that it's, we think it's really important. We think that we'll recoup this money back, frankly. Just in time, less time lost, in mistakes that we might have made. We think we'll get this back in spade.
Okay.
I think, you know, at first glance, it seems like that it's no big challenge to open a center like that and so forth. Some of the complexities, for example, just specifying the equipment that's to be purchased, that's not, I mean, we don't have a person on the city staff that has that capability. And some of these other operational things that are totally new to us, that the operation, that water park, is, it's really a complex issue. And once again, we don't have anybody that's experienced in that, knows how to do it, knows the kind of staffing that's required. And some of these things, there are laws and so forth to govern some of these types of things. And I think it's just good, I think it just makes good business sense that we do this and have somebody that we're talking to that really knows what's getting ready to happen here.
I guess, I guess the thing I have is I assume that a master plan contained all that. If it was a master plan, these guys didn't even finish out the park. There's eighty acres to that park. There's eighty acres to that park, and they were only doing fifty of it.
Well, the master plan was in a broad sense, system-wide, and it didn't drill down to these kinds of specifics, so.
But we paid a hundred and fifty-something thousand for that plan.
That's right.
That's a lot of money. We have a lot of potholes.
That is true.
Did we solicit any other advisory groups before accepting or before getting this bid?
No, no. Our experience with Ballard King has been so good and they're so highly recommended. And again, they're the gold standard when it comes to recreation centers and community centers and developing operational models that it just makes sense, since our experience and the way that they're looked at nationwide, we just felt like that it made sense to go with them.
Well, I'll just ask that we, Mr. Yalor Department, as everybody's, and I know that you guys are just careful, and when you bring something to us, I suppose this council is just going to be supportive of what we need to do to ensure we're doing the kind of best that we can. But I just hate that we have to outsource a lot. I understand, you know, we're building a building, we need engineers and architects and all that stuff. But some of the things that I think we maybe do in-house, you know. But again, you know, you were hired at the Robbins, and we're going to, on your judgment, we think this is what we need to do, and I'll be supportive of that. But let's just be careful with the impact on...
Sure. I understand that completely.
Okay, thanks.
I'll move to approve.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. Any other discussion? If not, let's call for the vote.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Scott Singer?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item number eight is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held March seventeenth, two thousand fourteen. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen in the amount of five-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars, seventy-one cents.
Move approved.
All right, thank you. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, what you call for the vote?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Scott Singer?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item number nine is the consent docket. Item A is accept the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held March seventeenth, two thousand fourteen. Item B is approve payment of a worker's compensation for ordered settlement to Michael Leonard in the amount of twelve thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty dollars for claim number two zero one three dash zero two seven 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 A and authorized payment placement on the property tax rolls. Item C is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen in the amount of three-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars, fifty-one cents.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, what you call for the vote?
Scott Singer?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. Item number ten, the citizens' forum for items not on the agenda. We don't have anyone signed up. Would anyone like to speak? Item B is items from the city council or trustees. Guess not.
I'll be real quick. I haven't heard anything about retreat. Should we do this once a year in the spring?
We do do those, yes. I think we, yes. We have several issues that need to be talked through, so yes, sir.
Anybody else? The only thing I have is I've gotten a lot of citizens' complaints on potholes, and they're everywhere. And it looks like we started today, so good job whoever did that. Because I've noticed there's a bunch of them filled up. And we appreciate that. Item C is items from the city manager or trustee.
Just very briefly, a couple of things. One is, first thing I want to do is commend our police department on the job they did yesterday. It was not an easy situation. It was getting volatile fairly quickly. And the guys and ladies out there, they handled that very well. It could have turned out not very good. But they are to be commended for that. I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Just to give you a little bit of an update, we've issued now five-hundred-and-two building permits for new homes in the storm area, so we're right at halfway there, so that's good. It's just a little bit of an announcement to you all and to the public on the storm shelter rebate program. We'll make those, the drawing and the determination on those within the next couple of days. Gail and Scott have through finally all of the four thousand and something people that were in the system. And there was around four hundred that were in the phase one, which is the storm damaged area. It's about right, wasn't it, Gail, around four hundred? So that's going to leave about eleven hundred, more or less. That'll be in the drawing, so to speak. There'll be about, what is it, twenty, almost three thousand that'll be in the drawing for the eleven hundred other spots. So then we'll notify those folks whenever that's done very soon. So...
Have we considered, there were several people, I say several, I don't know how many people, that bought a tornado shelter after the tornado and don't qualify under this claim. Is there any consideration to put them in the system? I don't know.
We've not, the programs we've done before, we've not, they've not been eligible if they already had it installed. There were quite a few people that did apply or put their name in the hat this time that already had one under the rules that we published and that were approved. They're not eligible. And Gail and I have talked about this quite a little bit. I'm concerned if we change the rules after the fact that some other people that may not have put in for one because they knew they weren't eligible might be concerned.
As this head grant kind of shakes out, isn't it possible that we can look at maybe using some of that money to figure for housing then?
I would think that would be a great idea for that.
I think it is possible. There are some eligibility requirements that I'm sure would be more strenuous than what we have now, which is there is no monetary eligibility requirements. There would be on that. And it's still a possibility yet, I would imagine, that there would be some FEMA mitigation funds at a later date.
So it won't, this won't just necessarily close the door to that idea altogether, but we don't have any definite point to...
If it's FEMA funds through the state, those are going to be, if they're already in the ground, they're going to be ineligible. They will be. The state's program is always that. There may be a way to do it in the future, Mayor, but I don't know for sure.
We have quite a bit of money that was donated to us that might be used.
We do have a little bit there that you all could choose to use for that if you still chose.
I don't know how many people were talking about that. So I don't know if there's twenty or two thousand.
In terms of the ones that have applied, Gail, and that we found to be ineligible, is about a thousand, wasn't it, eleven hundred?
Wow, okay. That didn't cover nearly enough of that.
I've heard from several people and they, I think some of them had made the presumption. And I'd reluctant to say anything because I'm in that category, but I would make application if it does open up. But, you know, if it works out well.
The, with the funding for this and with FEMA's funding, in terms of mitigation, the theory behind it is, is that you're trying to fund one for people that don't have one. The idea being that if you can afford to have one, and you've already put it in, then you probably don't need the funding. Now again, some people would argue with that, but that's the theory behind it in terms of the way FEMA operates and the way this was set up.
Well, I think our goal should be to make sure there's one in everybody's house. And I don't know how we do it. But, I mean, that's just a pretty good thought.
Well, you can require it in future homes. That's one way to do it. But it won't help with anybody that doesn't have one that's already built it.
Right.
One of the other issues that comes up with that, I mean, you know that I agree with all of that, but one of the issues we're going to have is that homes that are build on properties and living warrants aren't ever going to qualify for any of the program. And I don't know how we solve it.
Good idea. It's the only way, I don't know.
That's all I have at this time, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, we will go to item eleven, which is executive session. Section three oh seven, title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes permits the public body to meet an executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. It is the opinion of the city attorney that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet an executive session to discuss the following items. Item A, discuss, consider, and if deemed appropriate, consider taking possible action regarding pending litigation styled Amy Taylor versus City of Moore AGX, REL, Moore Police Department, case number CJ two zero one one dash one eight three six, and authorization for legal counsel and staff to take action as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the defendant as authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma statutes three oh seven B dash four. Item B is discuss potential acquisition of certain real property in the city of Moore and authorize staff to proceed as appropriate as authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma statutes three oh seven B dash three. Do we have a motion to convene to executive session?
So do we.
All right, thank you. Thank you. What you call for the vote, please?
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Scott Singer?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, we will convene to executive session. Thank you for coming.
Bring some WD-40 with you next time, will you?
Okay, would you call the roll back from executive session, please?
Jason Blair.
Here.
Scott Singer.
Here.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here. All right, do we have a motion on item A?
Make a motion that we direct the city staff to proceed as instructed in the executive session.
All right, thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here. All right, do we have a motion on item B?
Make a motion that there be no action taken on item B.
All right, thank you. Would you call for the vote, please?
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.[895.01]